All right. Let's get going. We've got um the Assessors Office. Is Patty online?
Good morning, Commission. Sierra and Patty are present.
Good morning. And if you could turn your cameras on, that would be, I really appreciate seeing faces. Yay.
We're in the same, we're in the same office.
That works. All right.
Okay, so um today we are requesting a conversion of one senior analyst to, I'm sorry, one appraiser analyst to a senior appraiser analyst. We currently have two appraiser analysts in the office. And at this time, one is being compensated as a lead pay, as they are currently tasked with training and supervising all appraisers appraisal staff, as well as creating and monitoring our rebound plan. And so in lieu of lead pay, we are requesting a senior position.
How long has this person been a, in the lead position?
About a year now.
Yeah.
So now, Maria, this is basically either a slight reorg or reclassification to a position that already exists. Do, does the job description and everything meet the position for a reclassification of the employee? Or is this a creation of a new position that they have to apply to reach, to go into? And therefore, we need to uh basically reorg and then do away with the position?
So it's a position conversion. So the incumbent in one of the analyst positions would not be automatically reclassed. There will be a meritorious process in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement. But this is one of those where Commissioner Netherland, you've, you've astutely pointed out in the past that if we're paying lead pay and there's a need that would be a continuance, we should be looking at, you know, those types of positions. So that's exactly what this is, is to convert out of a lead pay and actually create this senior. So it's not something we have to worry about renewal of each year.
Okay, so uh are you willing to, and understanding that if the commission was to do this, it would be kind of in a form of reorganization and the other position would disappear?
Correct. You're just taking one FTE and converting it to the other. Yeah, there would be no backfill.
Yeah, but I bet the elected understands that?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because sometimes in the past they have not, so.
I fully understand.
But I'm gonna say I am supportive of that reorganizational adjustment.
Mr. Shu.
Yeah, I'm as well. Appreciate the work that Patty and Sierra did with Mary to work through this. Thank you.
Yeah, I am supportive as well. I, I've never been a fan of lead positions, especially if they go from year to year to year. It just drives me crazy.
Yeah.
If the need is there, then, then let's work on that.
Madam Chair, I think you are actually the driving force for cleaning that up since you, since you've been here. You've always been that way and have had us all looking at it from a different perspective. It's appreciated.
And I thank Mary for working with us too. So thank you all.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the Auditor's Office. Steve, we see you.
Hey, good morning, Commissioner Trapp. Morning, Commissioner Netherland and Commissioner Shu. How are you guys today?
Incredible.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Fantastic. Hey, I thought we would cover this, or I anticipated that we would cover this as part of the budget discussion later in this meeting. But since McKenzie captured it as an agenda item, I thought I would take the opportunity to use the time for a little bit of a deep dive. And I want to pick up, I've got a presentation to share with you and I'll send McKenzie and you all a copy of this. If you can have as part of the permanent record. Let me just share my desktop here. You guys see that?
Yes.
Okay, so when we last um left this topic, I think it was Commissioner Netherland that suggested that we revisit the request in the context of a proposed reorg. So, and I think that there's a good, that's a, the right and proper basis to view this. There's a statutory basis for it. The current and projected statement of work for my office is greater than forty hours a week right now, and I'm not complaining. And I'm not a slacker. I love my job. I tend to be a workaholic more than anything, but there's more work to be done for the people of our county. So in accordance with RCW thirty-six sixteen dot seventy, I would like to employ or reestablish the chief deputy auditor position in this office as originally requested in a P O R for the preliminary budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The position would be created through an appointment without backfill, as we've discussed. And it would also, in addition to the statement of work issues, it would also allow me to properly reallocate some of the pure or more refined, I guess is the word, supervisory responsibilities for hiring, performance evaluations, progressive corrective action where it's, where necessary and potentially termination. We've got, we've got a little bit of, in my mind, a potential for an ethical issue where we have, it's a situation I've inherited from physician descriptions that were revised years ago, but we have a potential situation where a union employee can have that type of authority over other union employees. I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that and I'd like to fix that. Just to refresh everybody on, on what the law says, so it says in all cases where the duties of a county office are greater than can be performed by the person elected to fill it, the officer may employ deputies. And that requires the consent of the county board of, or Board of County Commissioners. And that the deputy would, may perform any act. Basically that they're authorized by the principal to perform. And so um where the gaps are in my current statement of work, list of things to do. I've got a lot of work, I believe, that needs to be done in terms of voter outreach. That's with local community organizations, tribes, schools, churches, et cetera. And with that, I also would like to pull together an elections town hall for twenty twenty-four, make sure everybody in our county is ready for the twenty twenty-four presidential election. I also have a, a real desire and I see a, a real need to increase voter registration database maintenance beyond what the Secretary of State provides us each month with the ERIC data and USPS change of address databases. There's just, there's holes in that data. It's not sufficient. And I think the expectation from a lot of people is that we do whatever we can to, to keep the voter rolls current and correct. And there's some real heavy lifting to be done there and I can elaborate more with you guys later on. There's also work I want to do with our legislative district representatives to develop legislation aimed at improving our elections process. Specifically, we want to work on a bill to strengthen our ability to ensure that people who register to vote are actually citizens. And also follow up on some suggestions from some of our citizens on ways to strengthen the law or improve a lot of protect, protect property owners against land fraud. And then also, I know with the pending setup of our county operations up north in Delpher, we're gonna need, I think, the ability to provide some, some coverage of both vote centers, both here and in Delpher once we're into our elections next year and going forward. So those are the things that came, you know, that, that I wanted to share with you today. Obviously, I've, I've got a longer list than that, but I don't want to bore you guys. So that's, that's the gaps that I think need to be filled to better serve the people of our county. You guys know what the current organization looks like. I have a great team and I love them and they do a great job. And that's our current configuration. The proposed draft position description. I have been working with Mary on it. This is an excerpt of the first two pages of it. I think I've got it to the point where, where Mary is okay with it and I don't want to speak for her or put words in her mouth. But we have put some time into trying to develop a position description for, for the proposed chief deputy position. But basically, the, the way we've set it up or the way I want to set it up is that the chief deputy would work with the auditor and the chief financial officer basically as a peer to develop the strategies and plans for improving auditor operations and service to the people of our county. I'll send you guys a copy of this. We don't need to go through the details here. It's a fairly high level and strategically minded and oriented position description. And as we talked before, want to make the appointment without backfill, at least for the near term. And so I'm proposing to appoint Marie Stevenson into this position. And I put a little spreadsheet in there that captures the numbers from the the budget workshop as they were, as they were captured and conveyed in that workshop. And you can see the total net increase if we were to do this, depending on actually where you guys land on the salary decision from the board's perspective. We're looking at somewhere over five thousand dollars. So again, touching on the fact that this is being proposed to be without backfill. Next year, we get, we got some, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to just bring people on board without really doing homework. So next year, we've got some things that we're gonna have to digest. There's been a change in the, in the election law to where we're gonna be in an automatic voter registration mode starting next year. And so what that, what that boils down to is any citizen that has a business with any state agency is going to be asked if there are citizens and set up for a provisional voter registration that will come to the auditor's offices and require a five-day turnaround to make contact with that provisional registered voter to confirm that yes, they really want to be registered. And if so, complete that process or if not, terminate the process. But that is going to be a statement of work that we're anticipating will be really impactful to us next year. But before we come back to you with that, I want to make sure we do the homework and really understand how best to accomplish it. In and around all that, we really want to have good plans in place for the twenty twenty-four presidential election. Everybody's anxious about that. And develop a good plan for the vote center operations in, in Delpher. And as I mentioned in past briefings, we anticipate having some succession planning needs, but I think in twenty twenty-four we'll have something much better defined and, and in terms of timeframe and timing that we can come back and, and weave into another discussion around, around staffing. So with that, I would, I would really like to have your consent to make this appointment and open up for any comments or questions you might have.
Madam Chair, may I jump in?
Sure.
Okay, so Steve, can you go back to the proposed, uh, there you go. So I want to make clear, I've been very supportive of this and I am, I think it's actually necessary and needed to run your department the best. But I want to make really, really clear is that I uh, because you made a comment about at this time, backfill at this time. I want to make really clear that I would only support a reorg chart that showed that chief deputy also down in the Marie Stevens elections administrator thing, so that there's no confusion that that position is not there anymore.
I agree.
The, just me personally. And I also want to clarify something. I also will only be supportive after, she may already, I haven't asked her yet, after Mary HR tells us that we have the proper structure and the proper description as needed. Because absent of that, you could be close within talk with her, but that ain't good enough. I actually need her to, to look at me and say, this is something that the county through HR believes is the right job description and the way to handle it.
Fair enough.
Mary, where are you on that?
I'm not quite there. So I have a couple concerns, which I've already shared with the auditor, but one of them is the org structure. So there are already three supervisor managers, whatever you want to call them, as you can see. So I also have the union issue that would not be addressed, that the auditor brought up by a reinstatement of a chief deputy. And it looks like, based on the statement of work that was presented, it's very elections specific. So having an elections administrator or more support in elections would make sense to me as opposed to a chief deputy. I also haven't seen a chief deputy in a county that is a peer with another manager such as proposed here with the CFO. I also think that the backfill issue, if you're not going to backfill it in the elections, is still going to be the emphasis. It looks, the optics aren't optimal, I don't know if that makes sense, when it looks like someone is just being potentially elevated, but the responsibilities are staying extremely similar. And I also am not sure where the numbers came from. We haven't comped this position yet and we'd need to go ahead and go out and do that. I also would want to be very careful about engaging with the union around this position because we do have a union member, a bargaining member who is operating in a managerial role. We need to be careful of skimming. So those are kind of worries right now.
Just to step back through it and I, I'll try to, I didn't take detailed notes, Mary, but I'm not going to have a union employee responsible for hiring and firing and performance evaluations of another union employee. I just think that's an ethical issue that regardless of who's comfortable with it, it's not right.
So Steve, on that, just so you know, so what I, I want to see as a commissioner is I want to see some of those duties that management general duties actually put in writing and moved to Mary. You know, I'm not, I'm not much caring whether or not we see somebody else at the same level. If he creates a managerial position, that's managerial over all of them, then I'm comfortable with that. That doesn't set me off. But you do have to have the salaries and stuff adjusted according to what the market and everything and Mary says, you have to make sure that the job descriptions fulfill all the needs for, for the position or else it's not a reorg, it's just a rename and I, I can't support that. That was something that she was bringing up that I'm always very careful of. We fought over the years with other electives on giving people raises just by changing the name. It has to be the duties. It has to be everything. And I'm just letting you know for that. You put all that together and you get HR's buy-in on those aspects of it and then you will have my support. Until then, I don't think it's, it's fully baked yet.
Okay, well, just to be clear, and I'll just want to cover those other issues while we're all here. This position description has been revised and the, the the term that drives the position description is lead, lead management, which is different than supervisory, right? Supervisory responsibilities would live here.
Okay.
And that's where we could have a potential skimming issue because that is now historically bargaining unit work.
Well, that.
Which has been bargained over the last few years before I got here.
Hiring and firing is part of our union contract?
Not firing, but they can, there is a language in there around providing infinite performance evaluations, directing daily work. And what I didn't understand when I got here is why it's that way because there's already a lead in that area as well. But regardless, the position description is written as such that that's bargaining unit work that we would have to work very closely with the union on to avoid a skimming charge.
Well, so again.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here real quick. It just, it sounds to me like it, like it's just, it's still in the, the mixing process. It's not even ready to go into the oven yet. And so it sounds to me like there, there still needs to be a lot more work on this. And I am concerned about the twenty twenty-four election. It's going to be huge. And so to me, that, the elections department should be your, if, if it was me, that would be more of my concern right now than a chief deputy. Just because I know that that's going to take up a ton of time and, and maybe even having either part-time or, or full-time staff there, you know, I don't, I don't want to call elections seasonal, but we have a lot of seasonal help also here at the county. So that might be a better option, but it just sounds to me like it's, it's still in the ingredient stages even. Commissioner Shu, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with everything that I've heard so far. I mean, I, Mr. Auditor, I'll look forward to you forwarding the, the remainder of this presentation to us. We don't have all the, we didn't have all the information ahead of time. But you know, I guess my concern, in addition to what has already been discussed is, you know, the elections administrator position practice still is, is a union position currently.
No, it's not.
Yeah, okay.
So, position. So these are the three management positions. CFO would be chief deputy, be a management position and elections administrator, which would be the position that we would not backfill. This is not a management position. This is an hourly or a union hourly position.
You're still supervising duties that are baked into the position description though, that's union work. And how it got that way, I'm not sure, but that's kind of the, the, what we're stuck with at this point.
So Mary, I, I hear you. We revised it to, to refine that somewhat. And I'm telling you, I'm not going to have an hourly employee responsible for hiring and firing of other hourly employees. Just not gonna happen.
So we should not be arguing that point here with either of these there. But Mary, I would expect that you would work to try and find ways to, to help the elected get where they need to get within the best of the abilities, regardless of any personal feelings we have about a position. If it can't be done, then it can't be done. But there's ways to work it through. It sounds to me though, that we first must work it through before we can have it before us to pass. That's what I'm saying, Mr. Auditor and to Mary as well. We need to work that through. And if there's a mediation that's needed between the two of you at the time, we have Mark and there's also the rest of us. But it's definitely not there now. So although I want to be supportive of it, I can't without all the pieces in place. So I hope you understand that, Mr. Auditor.
Yeah, fair enough. And I'll send you guys a copy of the revised position description for this position as well. You can see the, the refinement that's taken place there. And Mary just answered your question again. These are numbers that were pulled together for the budget office review in the workshop back in October. Those are not my numbers. These are their numbers.
But Steve, I'm sure you appreciate that no number exists unless HR tells us there's a number. We can't just take it from anywhere else. HR has to tell us.
No, she says I don't know where those numbers came from. I'm explaining from where they came.
So I think that, that let's, let's, let's continue this conversation and if if we, if we can come back with a more baked, doesn't even have to be, could still be kind of gooey in the center, but come back with a, we can continue this conversation after we have a little bit more information.
Okay. We can do it offline if you, if you like, but I would like an operational definition of by what we mean with more baked. What is exactly is it we're looking for?
More what?
Be offline.
With, with more what? I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Netherland, go through, go through what you're looking for and then we can add on more.
Okay, I see what you're saying. I didn't understand what he, what he asked. So Mr. Auditor, one of the things that I would definitely need, as I said, is on that reorg chart that it is actually spelled out specifically that that position is within this other position. I do not want to see another box because that means backfill no matter what. So that has to be changed to where there is no backfill because that position is not there. It's rolled into the other. I would also need there to be an understanding agreement on the numbers between you and HR. Are, we base our numbers and how we pay based on the recommendations from HR, not anything else. That's, that's what they do. I also would need to see a job description that is flushed out between you. And again, we can help work some of that stuff through. But I still need to have Mary tell me that she can live with this because she is HR. She's trained in HR. And she's actually very good at it. So I have to trust that we pay this person money because she's very excellent at her job. And to me, she's proved that she is. So me and her sometimes will disagree and I will ask her to find a way to get to yes on something like this. But understand, I have so much respect for her. If she's still at the end of saying no, I have a hard time going over the top of that because she's actually very good. So I'm asking you to sit with her and that has to be spelled out. We can't create a position with a half-spelled-out job description. It has to be completely fulfilled. So we know what we're agreeing to. And then Mary, I hope Mary will help mitigate some of the issues that will be with the union to find a way to get to yes on some of these things. Okay, so that's what, that's what I expect from you before I could look at this or even consider passing it.
All right, sounds good. So Mary, I'll get some time on your calendar and look for your guidance on how we want to put numbers in here. We can go over the position description one more time and go from there. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Shu, do you have anything to add?
No, I think, I think we've said enough so far.
Yeah, I would, I, I would like you to take a look at, at, you've got, according to the, the current makeup of the, of your office. Elections staff, I know that that's your, that's your paid baby and that's where your passion is. But take a look and, and I would, I would hate to see elections be in a jam, especially for twenty twenty-four.
Well, that's where we're at. So appreciate it. Guys, thank you.
Yep, look forward to you bringing it back in a few weeks. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. All right, let's move on to public works. Loretta.
Morning, Commissioners. We have some water and sewer and solid waste rate items to review with you and discuss our upcoming hearing and requested action on the solid waste long haul agreement. And if you would like, Commissioners, and time allows, Mike's prepared to talk about a couple of road items that we see are on the correspondence for tomorrow as well. So that's our agenda this morning. And in terms of the water and sewer utility rate, we, as you know, have a standard resolution that adjusts the CPI annually. And Richard is here with a recommendation to suspend that and go through the details and, and the request.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Well, as you know, as Loretta has briefed you, we, we normally adjust this every year by the April to April CPI, which by the way is six point nine percent this year. And you also know that we're looking to change our rate structure. So we're asking, we'd like to suspend that rate increase until we settle on a new rate structure, new rate. And so I'd like to, you know, fill you in on a little bit of a, our timeline, we're gonna do, we have to do community outreach and talk to our, our homeowners associations before we talk to the, you know, entire communities and before we come back to you. So we, hopefully, we've provided you with a somewhat generalized schedule. And I could go through that. We have our community outreach is where we are totaling up and averaging out our consumption data and sending it out to customers. So they'll know what the average is, what their, their high use is and kind of what the, what the whole neighborhood average is. Then that, that's going to go out this November mailing. And then we're going to meet with the HOA board. So Russellwood, we have scheduled for December second at one o'clock. Case any of you'd like to show up, please mark that on your calendars. I see Randy shaking his head. Good. Appreciate this. We're to be determined on Beards Cove right now. We've got a, a communication out to their board president and other representatives trying to get some word back. So we're waiting back on that. Our, our nearest one is Lakeland Village. We're gonna be meeting with the homeowner association board there November fifteenth at four thirty. So please, if you'd like to come, love to see you there. January, February, that's when we're planning to go out and meet with all the customers in general of H Utility and get feedback. And then February nineteenth, we're going to come back and brief you on what we heard and what we have and recommendations. And then February twenty-seventh, hopefully rate action and adoption and March, implement new rates.
So Richard, I'm gonna jump in. I have no problem with the first part of it. The only question I have is why are we stretching it out so far? If we're gonna have meetings with the HOA boards, for example, Beards Cove Water is the HOA, it's gonna be the HOA board. That is the same people, the same district. You don't, we don't have water outside of Beards Cove, correct? The same thing would apply with Russellwood for the water aspect of it. The same thing would apply with Russellwood for the water aspect of it. Uh, we don't do Lakeland Village's water, so Lakeland Village would be one for sewer, so that'd be North Bay. It would make sense to me that we find a way to include them and and the North Bay constituents at the same time in a general meeting. And then you have one more general meeting for uh. Uh. Belfort wastewater. And then you're done. And you, I think what we need to do here as Commissioners is look at, you know, the two, three options and go forward with you to to. Take two, three options to that community. And get their feedback, and then you bring back that feedback to us, and then we have that. Finished a lot. Earlier, I just. Not sure we have to wait all the way to March to get things in there. I'll be curious what the other Commissioners think.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Shute.
Yeah, I I tend to, I tend to agree with that. Um, you know, I guess my my bigger overarching concern is. Once we set these to really adhere to them. Um, you know, to hold ourselves to the timeline that we're putting forward, and so the meetings are an important part of that. Um, being able to communicate via mail is an important part of that. Um, and then ultimately. Just making sure that we're on track with it is, I think, my bigger concern. I think some of those. Details will fall into place as long as we can, as we can stick into a timeline.
Yeah, I would I would agree with that. I. It, yeah, March seems like it's a ways out there. Um, I do know that there's there's HOA, there's an HOA meeting. Um. I believe it's sometime in January. If you could reach out to Shorecrest, they're trying to get a bunch of HOAs together. So reach out to the Shorecrest HOA. And maybe. You can, if they have enough. I mean, that's just their boards, so. Um, I don't know, reach it, reach out to them, and maybe we can have a conversation at that time also. Um. But. I really want us. Want us to meet. Schedules if we if we have a date. Set. I really don't want to go. Past that. Doesn't look good for any of us.
No. Totally get it. Appreciate that. I think you.
So my my concern, I absolutely want to get this done, and I know that that we should be implementing new rates as of January first per. Our existing um. Resolutions that define when we're gonna do this. I am a little bit concerned as we enter into our. Holiday months that we lose time and may not get the participation that um. That I want to have with the public here and. So I just kind of want to get a feel for what we what realistic timelines can we set? Uh, so that I can make sure that we. Get everything done and and actually. Meet the intent of what the board asked us originally to do, which is go out and talk to the public and help them. Be involved in this decision-making process associated with the restructuring of. Of how their utilities are are built.
Well, I don't think we'll have, we we've got options. So we do have options for that. Um. That 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 that's half the battle. It's coming up with with the options, though. Uh, we just need to get out there. Get rolling on it and.
Well, I'd like for the Commission to agree on the three options that we're sending back out there. I know one of them was a uh. You know, basically the maximum weight. Another one was a full. Uh, compensation, what we need to run the utility, and the other was. Um. Was it uh? It was the third part. It was a weighted. Way of doing it as well.
The tiered structure.
Tiered structure. But I I think the Commission has to say that this would just set out the public, because if we send that out to the public and decide on a fourth one later, that would not be.
Yeah.
So Loretta or or Richard, what's the difference between tiered and and a uniform, a uniform block rate?
So a tiered rate for the water system, Commissioners, would mean you're paying for a base rate. And then if you're exceeding a consumption, a a set consumption amount. Then you're paying a higher amount for the next um tier, if you will. And what we had presented was a two-tiered structure. So base. And then um an an additional tier for exceeding, and the the goal of that is to. Provide equity amongst ratepayers. And then also to assist with water cons- um conservation.
Right, yeah, so this this was one of the the topics at the. The conference. Week before last, I want to say.
Yes. You're the, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Oh, that's okay. Yeah, it was it was interesting to hear how other water districts were 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 handling um. Their like their connection fees and stuff like that also. So which? Which one were you recommending that we? That we um? Or? The top three, I guess, is that right, Commissioner Netherland?
Yeah, so, because I myself, I know where I land, but I don't know if the Commissioners ever said that that maximum uh amount as a guide. Uh, I would also like to see probably a hybrid in in uh some of the waters that's a uh that maximum amount plus. Uh, the other tier for excessive use. Uh, so that base is is set at that maximum. Uh, what's the term that we're using?
The maximum tolerable, and it was one of the things, Commissioners, that we were looking at um as a way of setting rates. So it was a, if you recall, a percent of the average annual income. And um there's a maximum tolerable for water utilities and a max tolerable rate for for sewer systems.
And with that, there's a downside that if we do the max tolerable, which I am in favor of, but if we do that. Uh, the public needs to know there may be a time where assessments or something may come into play if they are are supportive of doing it that way. Because, you know, things will happen. These things are being set up because this is what maximum for rate is, does not necessarily cover a future. Um, expansion or or. Some huge problem that happens or whatever, so they need to be made aware that if that's what they support, which I think they will. They still need to be told that this is the other aspect if you do that. The other is, we just pay. Uh, make the rates exactly what we think it would take to take care of the whole future, and that's tough, but it's rough and and that's. But it has to be said. Some people want to just pay now, and they need to be heard from too. Have the chance to argue in the room.
You know, another thing to consider on some of the ways they're setting these rates, another like a hybrid version, um, I know that I looked up one was Boyceford Valley. Where they have a a a base rate. And where our base rate contemplated includes. X number of gallons, theirs does not. You get your base rate. And then it's your build straight on usage after that as well, in in addition to every last. Per hundred cubic feet. And it really is equity, you know? Because there are some people that might just use three hundred cubic feet of water instead of six hundred. And be both the other minimum.
And I believe Commissioner Trask, that was the the community that you brought back um information from, yeah, at the the conference. Thank you.
Great. Oh, you're welcome.
All right, so we had presented presenting information on the maximum tolerable. What does that rate look like? What does it take to um fully fund the utility based on operating costs, existing debt? And future capital improvement program? And then presenting the the base plus tiered. And sharing those with the community.
All right, that sounds good to me. I'm just doing a little bit more research and so um. Yeah. According to Google.
According to Google.
Yeah, those are really the the three basic pricing structures, so.
And then just to share, Commissioners, where you're at, where we are, we um, so our new finance manager, Stephanie. Met with myself and Richard and Katrina from TDJ. Two weeks ago, I believe, to review the rate work to date, make bring Stephanie up to speed on the rate work that's been completed. And then developed some concise presentation materials, and we will be wrapping up those presentation materials. In preparation to go out to our our community. So that's that's our next order of business this week.
All right. All right, any questions for Loretta?
Not for me right now.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All righty.
So next up. Is our annual solid waste. CPI increase. And this we are not recommending to suspend. And Richard's here to speak with you about. That rate increase.
So as you know, this is also per resolution. Um. Oh, I've I've got the uh the the news release here in my hand. It says, per Mason County Resolution Number twenty-two dash twenty-seven, disposal rates at Mason County Transfer Dropbox stations. Will increase by five point four percent beginning January first. Twenty twenty-four, as directed by Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven. Fees will be increased each year by the amount of the August to August Consumer Price Index, CPIU for the Seattle, Oklahoma, W area. This increase is to cover the annual cost increase experienced by the county to operate and maintain the Shelton, Pittsburgh Union and Belfort Transfer Dropbox locations.
Oh, Randy, you're muted.
Commissioners, we used to be much higher in our neighboring ones. Uh, time has caught up with them. And uh. I, this uh, this is more than competitive in many different areas, especially in the introduction uh bottom rate fee. I would be supportive.
Time as well.
As am I.
Hey, thank you, Commissioners. And then next up, um. We have our hearing scheduled for tomorrow. And we do not have the contracts finalized or contract finalized. And are requesting that we continue this hearing. And the date that we are targeting to continue the hearing to is January sixteenth. And we are recommending that we re-advertise since we've done. A couple of extensions at this point and want to be clear and communicate with the public. When the hearing will be and what the action will be.
So this is the third. Extension, right?
That's correct, Commissioner.
At what point? Do we say we're at an impasse?
Oh, we are not in an impasse at this point. What we were um meeting this past week on. Was the form of the contract itself, Commissioners. So we met with um Calitz County. And met with our legal and risk folks. To determine the form of the contract. As far as the content of the agreement. I think we're there.
I'm waiting for you, Kelly. I'm curious what you're thinking, because I've got a lot going on in my head on this.
Yeah, I think all of us do.
Yeah. I can see him, his wheels are turning and he's parsing his words specifically. Go for it.
Well, you know, you know, Commissioners, once, once it comes out of your mouth. Back, so I, I I want to be, you know, I want to be respectful of of the negotiation um here. I I just. You know, my my concern is um if we truly are down to the form of the contract. I don't. I don't know why we would need to extend it by more than two months. Um, I get the need to renotice it. Um, I think that's totally fine, and I just, you know, I. Uh, I kind of mentioned this to Mark a little bit last week, and I I just. You know, I wonder if if extending it to December. Uh, you know, wouldn't be the, ju- I I just don't want this to lose, us to lose sight of this again, um, or this to fall off. You know, I mean, having to continue these things time and time again, having to continually re-rack the. The 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 timelines associated with these deliverables, and and I I think the frustrating part is. Like, we're not the ones, the Commission isn't the ones coming up with these timelines. We're not the ones saying that, um, you know, it needs to be done by a certain. Certain date for any of this. These are generated at the staff level, and we're we're trusting your. Your own expertise and your own knowledge of workflow and moving pieces to, you know. Give us a a really good, accurate. Timeline, and so my my concern is we put this to January sixteen. Does this get lost over the holidays? Are we picking back up on this on January second? And then we're we're, you know, a week or two out from the hearing, and we're we're back at square one. And so if truly we're down to just the form of the contract, then then I I just I wonder why that would take two months. If there's more, I mean, I just, if there is more to the negotiation than we're talking about right now. Than just form, I, you don't necessarily need to give us details, but you need to give us an indication that it's just more than form. Um. And and I I just. I just don't want to to put this off so far that, you know, we're coming back. You know, uh, January fifteenth and saying, well, we actually, we actually need to do this in February. We actually need to do this in March. I I just, my. Level of confidence is pretty low right now in our. In our ability to deliver on these deadlines.
I can tell you, I have a hard time with the extension for the same reasons as we just mentioned. Uh. Seems like an awful long time to put it out, but I can tell you this, that I do know. That uh if we do grant this extension, I am not going to be interested in granting any other one. Uh, we have a problem if we can't fix this and and. I I know we're saying that it's basically form. But I'm confused with that also. Just it just doesn't seem like, it seems like we could put together a lot quicker than that if it's just our form issue on our contract. As long as they agree. If they're not agreeing, then that's different. And then we're back to the same question. Where are we?
Right, and then and then that that, you know, that brings up the question, well, do we? Is this going to force us to go out again? So. This being the third extension, i- it does get kind of concerning, and I'm sure the public is going, what's going on? You know, why, why are we having to extend time after time after time? So. Like I. I kind of agree with um. Commissioner Shute, if we put this into December. If it's if it's just a. Contract wording, if it's not over and above. What the RFP was. You know what I mean? I'm I'm concerned about. Litigation and making sure that we do this and we do it right.
Yeah, and that was part of our review with our um our legal. Folks, Commissioners, that's foremost on our mind as well. And part of the timeline has to do with the fact that we would be actually executing an agreement for hauling. And an agreement for the disposal. And that requires two different actions, one an ILA and one with a contract with our our contractor. So that is part of the reason for the, well, it is the reason. For the deadline or the timeline.
So with with, does that change the? The. Does that change? What was asked for in the RFP?
No, it does not.
Okay, so they're within the same terms.
Yes. But two separate contracts to accomplish the work.
I think the difference here is that um our our traditional contract was controlled by the contractor, right? Every. Everything was that both the the transport and the disposal uh, was being handled by one entity um, that controlled both. The landfill as well as the transport side. Um, with this. Contract that we're negotiating right now with Mason County Garbage, um, the landfill is actually Calitz County landfill, so it's another governmental entity. So. Entering into an interlocal agreement with that. Entity requires us coming up with the contract and having it go through the Calitz County Commission. Um, as well as as our own commission. So I think that that's the concern about the timeline is. Um, making sure that we can get that ILA turned around. So that the the contract can pu- complete, the transport side of it, I think, is uh, very close to being. Completed, um, maybe a few items of language that we want put in that contract, but. It does require an ILA.
Mark, I need a little more explaining on that one, please, because it's confusing me a little bit. Uh, we enter into a contract with a company. To do something because they usually enter into the contract for the disposal and stuff like that. How are we now the entity entering a contract with the county for the disposal on their behalf? And what does that do if something happens with that agreement in two years, three years? Uh, when we have an agreement with somebody else at a certain price?
Yeah, so there's the the alternative, and Loretta, do you want me to continue to talk about this or Richard or Loretta? Would you guys like to, I hate to jump in and steal your thunder, but.
There is, in our existing contract and in the contract that we are currently negotiating. There is alternate disposal language in the event of um, unforeseen circumstances. And so the hauling contractor would still be responsible for providing. And has identified alternate disposal sites in the event that the primary disposal site is. Out of commission for whatever unforeseen circumstances.
So then why are we entering into a contract with them? Maybe I misunderstood it, but that's what it sounded like. It sounded like that Mason County is entering into a contract with the actual uh, place we're hauling it to.
Correct.
For the disposal, then it becomes our contract and our problem.
We still have the the backup that is on the contractor to provide. But the initial disposal, yes, is is ours. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Have we always had to do that with the other, with our past ones?
No, we have not. And the reason being is because with our existing contractor, they own their own facility. So that's the, that's the distinguishing difference, commissioners. They own their own solid waste facility.
And and I'm tracking you there. So then that comes back to my other question. Why are, we're entering into a contract with them, with another organization? It's their responsibility to place the waste when it's done. Why is the county putting its name and credit and uh, agreement on a contract uh, for them?
Because it is the most cost-effective way for us to move forward.
Normally, when we, normally when we enter into a contract with a, with a general contractor, let's say. Um, if they hire subs, then they're paying those subs and they're charging an administration fee on top of that. Um, so the. Structure of which this was presented to the county. Um, did not have any additional administrative costs tied to the disposal. By having it go through Mason County Garbage. So there, if if we contract directly with Calitz, then we get that direct rate. And we don't have to pay any administrative cost for. The billings to go through Mason County Garbage.
Did we give that option to anybody else that was applying?
It was open to anybody else that applied, yes.
I- in that same manner?
It was, well, we didn't tell them how to respond, but it was definitely available to all individuals. And that's a discussion that we had with our legal counsel last week.
So I I I, you know, listening to the conversation, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a. A little bit more than just we're down to form. There seems like there's at least a few moving pieces here that need to be resolved. So I mean, that's obviously. A little bit different than just agreeing to. You know, some of the boilerplate stuff or or how, you know, those types of elements of the contract, so I. I get, I get the January sixteenth date because of of some of those things. I just don't, I just don't like it.
How long is the contract we're entering into with this entity? And how long is the contract that we're entering into with the county? Uh, and if there is a a a overlap, what happens at the end of that contract with the county?
They are both for ten-year periods.
Okay, so there there's no risk of, of there being a disruption between the two and an increase in in the in the fees, okay? Well, I I'll go ahead and jump in. I'm not comfortable with this, but I. I I would ask that you actually make a a shorter date between it. As your recommendation, but if you do not, I will still be in favor of this. But I'm going to tell you right now, I will not be in favor of doing it again. I will be asking. Uh, for us to step out of the game. Because I don't like how this is all going. This is actually pretty uncomfortable even right now, just so you know. I'm not comfortable with us doing the work and us entering in the contracts with the people that uh, are going to receive. The the waste and stuff and putting us at at risk with things going wrong or going bad. I, when when we contract with them, we do it with them carrying all that weight and them carrying the risk. That's why we contract with them. And that's why the rates are what they are. But I will not stand in the way of this one, not Loretta, just so you know. But I would prefer a smaller window and I would prefer it be done because I will not be. Interested for myself. I'm not speaking for the other commissioners. I'm doing this again.
Yeah, I'll jump in. I I. When Mark brought this to me, I was, I I'm pretty, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with it and it just feels like it's. It's information that wasn't included when. We first heard about this. And so it just, it just, it it does make me nervous, um, moving forward. And so if we, if we have to push it out. Then I guess we have to push it out. But I'm I'm, I'm, I'm getting nervous about this one, honestly. And just, just because there the, we didn't have the full information, I don't, didn't, I don't feel. So I guess moving forward, if we have to move it out, that's, let's move it out, but. Let's make sure that we have everything, all of our Ts crossed and our Is dotted and the periods where they should be.
So, you know, in addition to that, I think the one, that what I want to see. I'd love to see it by next Monday. Is a checklist of outstanding items associated with this. So I want to know what we're working on over the next two plus months. And I want to know what those, what those milestones are within the next two months of how we're going to resolve the outstanding items on your checklist.
Okay.
I'm gonna say, uh, oh, I'm just gonna go ahead and agree with that and I. I'm feeling we're all gonna agree. This way there's no confusion, uh, what the commission wants. Uh, I'm gonna say the exact same thing. I'd like to. That to see it uh, within the week of what that looks like, what those those benchmarks are, uh, what pieces are left out, what the benchmarks are. And uh, I'll make my decision based on that when the time comes for the vote, uh. Because I don't want to stand in the way of it, but at the same time, if others have the same questions, I think we need to be together as a commission before we. Go too much further on this.
Yeah, I I echo that.
All right, commissioners, we will have that for you on Monday.
But just to make sure that, just to make sure, Commissioner Netherland, um, that we're on the same page here. We have a public hearing scheduled for tomorrow. That we're not prepared to to to. Complete. So we need to extend. The public hearing. And um, we've talked and and all agree that we think that it needs to be renoticed so that the public can be aware. That this item and kind of puts it back in front of them again, because it's, I think our original one was in May. Now we're here today and we're, we have to push it forward. So can we push it forward to the January sixteenth date? Which I am supportive of. And then. Have a timeline associated with milestones presented to you next Monday. That shows you how we're going to get this completed by January sixteenth.
I would rather actually have the information first, but I, as I said before, I'm not going to stand in the way of it. I I understand that and uh. Uh, you know, if Commissioner Shute is comfortable with that and Commissioner Trask is, then I will be also. But I would definitely much rather know what we're actually talking about, what it looks like. I wouldn't even mind uh, tabling uh, the hearing to, for two weeks to make the decision on how much longer to do it, uh. But if they want to hold it off till January, I think it's the sixteenth, I am not going to stand against it. I will vote in favor of it with the other two commissioners.
I understand that we've got, we've got quite a few holidays coming up between now and. Um, the sixteenth, January sixteenth. I just, I just want to make sure that we're ready to go. No more, no more, no more continuations. I I. These continuations are are making me feel feel very uncomfortable.
What are you thinking, Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, I I think, you know, I would, I would probably continue it. My gut would say continue it to December, um, I think sixth. Fifth, hang on. Fifth, and then, you know, I mean, you can renotice it for the December fifth. And then you can do it, you know, but I I I, my concern is I I, based on the discussion today. I don't think that they can, they can have a completed contract for us by December, by December. And so that's, that's the, that's the pickle that I'm in here is, I want us to keep this in front of us and not. And not, you know, continue to push it out, but at the same time. We're, we're a little bit further out than some of the, based on some of the discussion today than. Than I would like. So I I don't think we can get around the January sixteenth date, unfortunately.
Well, we could uh, we could table it uh, till Ja- till December fifth in the hearing tomorrow. Has nothing to do with notification. We've already noticed for everything, but then if we, if we decide uh, uh. You know, in the week or so to. Well, excuse me, I was to say it wrong differently. We can hold off this week and then do it till December. Uh, and then if it still doesn't work at that point, we can notice it in December for the larger discussion with people. We don't have to notice it for. A week. It just wouldn't make our two weeks, it wouldn't make a difference.
And I, I, when I asked about continuations, because that that does make me nervous continuing time after time after time without. Um, official notice in the newspaper. I was told that because we do notice it in a meeting. Then we don't have to go back out. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, we've already noticed it. We're just continuing, but uh, Loretta, I think, correct and false wrong, was asking to renotice. Said so that the public could be more aware of where we're at, what's happening, uh, but it's not required. That's just something that she would like to do, and I would agree with that. If we're gonna continue anything out, might as well renotice it, let the people know what's going on.
Well, I think if we're going out more than two weeks, absolutely, I would feel more comfortable letting the public know that. And it appears we are, so. Let's, let's get that notice then for January sixteenth.
I apologize that I might be a little slow today, um, but I I I'm a little conflicted on what I heard. So. Number one, I heard that we, an option was to continue it to December fifth. Knowing that we most likely will have to continue it to the sixteenth of January in order to get it complete. So at the December fifth hearing, we would actually continue and do another public. Announcement saying that the. Public hearing is actually going to be held on January sixteenth.
I like that one because this way we'll have that checklist that Commissioner Shute had asked for, along with the benchmarks. That we can weigh it upon to know if this is what we think is going to happen, where we're going to go. Uh, so. But again, if we just did it till the sixteenth, I'm not going to stand in the way of it, but I like that original. And it'll also hold everybody to the point of uh, giving us a real update where we're at on this, you know. For for us just to find out today that we're working with another county and that we're the the ones that are entering the contract, that surprised me a lot, just so you know.
Well, and I.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I I think, you know, given Commissioner Netherland's earlier comment about not being interested in the, in the continuation. Potentially beyond January sixteenth, I would rather know on December fifth. That you're not going to hit those targets than. Continue it tomorrow to January sixteenth and find out the week before that we're not going to hit those targets. Uh, I think, you know, I think we're will, I think we're within. Our statutory obligations for noticing and continuing hearings. I think once we have a better idea in December of what is outstanding and what progress has been made, then. You know, I would be less upset about if we had to do it uh, at the end of January versus January sixteenth, based on what we found. As long as we're being, we're showing progress on the items that are outstanding. So I don't want to risk, you know, putting us in a position where we're. We're not where we need to be January sixteenth either. I'd rather know that ahead of time. Uh, and I think the way we do that is by continuing tomorrow's hearing to December fifth. And keeping that in the forefront, and then we can maybe make a more notice, a more accurate notice to the public after December fifth. Because you you're dealing with, you're, now we're dealing with a, an additional party to this with, with Calitz County and. We obviously know we have constraints. I'm sure Calitz County also has restraints and. What their meeting capacity is and all that kind of stuff, so. Let's not. Put ourselves in a worse position.
All right, and and just. Letting us know all the information, I think is important going forward. Keeping us informed.
Alrighty, so we will um, revise this. Notice, Loretta, to be December fifth.
Yes.
And on Monday. The thirteenth. We will come back and brief the board on. The milestones that we need to have in place in order to get this completed by the sixteenth. Which requires us to get that turned in to McKenzie by noon on the eighth this Wednesday, so very short term.
Yep. All right, thank you, commissioners. So that took a lot of time. Would you like to hear anything road related?
Yes.
Yeah, I I think, I think we need to talk about this project that we have on the hearing agenda for tomorrow, the action agenda for tomorrow at a minimum.
Okay, so item eight point six, creating a county road project for the Tahuya Post Office Bridge.
Right.
All right, Mike, are you still there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so we uh, we've received an email from uh, Ken uh, concerning uh. Item eight point six, the uh, North Shore uh, Tahuya Post Office Bridge Project. All we're doing here is creating a CRP number, that is to track. Uh, any expenditures that we do on uh, doing some of uh, studying and some design work on this structure. Um, the judicial uh, action that Ken is referring to, we, we are fully aware of that at this point in time. We we've been noticed, notified to that. Uh, that action was uh, was based on uh, two thousand sixteen storm event. And uh, with, and uh, issues with the DNR. Uh, we have records for this bridge uh, since two thousand seven is have very little clearance under the structure. About twelve inches and it's got about twelve inches uh, this year. So we've, we've been noticing the last few years, been a lot more debris. Uh, hung up under the bridge and what's going to do, happen is that's going to back up and that's going to. Uh, flood downstream, not directly uh, downstream, but to the west. Is where it travels. And so what we're doing is just laying out plans to, to elevate this bridge at at some point in time. Uh, seeing that it's considered not a bridge, so it's not. To elevate this bridge at, at some point in time, uh, seeing that it's considered not a bridge, so it's not eligible for funding. It's not. It's not long enough to do that, so we have to do this all with our own funding, so. Uh, we'd like to just go ahead and, and create the CRP. If there ever is any, uh, uh, you know, judicial, uh, action to, uh. You know, to say that, uh, you know, somebody else is to blame and can fund that, we'll have it all tracked. So we'll have the amount of, uh, that we've spent on it tracked. I just think that we, we need to move forward on the structure itself.
And Commissioners, just so you know. Uh, I'm, I'm learning about some of this as we're speaking, uh, from what Ken is referring to and stuff, and I don't know why it would stop. The project. I do know that the community up there has been asking me over and over again to look at the different options. We've had staff out there to look at it. Over and over again. It's been, uh, viewed at this point, uh, up in, unless it's changed, that it has not completely been. Uh, obstructed, the water had stayed underneath it, but it's about as close as it's going to get. From going over the top. If you go out there, you're going to see there's very little clearance at all. We'd had talk about dredging it at one point, but the problem with dredging it without being it dredged all the way around. Is it be like a bathtub that just fill right back up again. And with that, it'd be, you know. Just throwing mu- good money after bad, because it would just fill up within a couple of years and we'd be back to the same situation we were in. So I think it was important, and that's maybe why, and they'll correct me if I'm wrong, why they had to look at the other options. Cause, uh, now if they went and dredged it, everybody did it, maybe we could keep it like it is, but. We have to at least look at what the option would be if nothing changed there in order to keep it from going over the top of the road. Uh, and I know that's what the community has actually asked for over and over again from me. So I'm just sharing what I have.
Now, is this the, the? Um, twenty fifty five, the Tahuya Blackspine?
This is the CRP twenty fifty two, uh, Tahuya. S, uh, Tahuya Post Office Bridge.
Okay, so that's. On here says North Shore, is that right?
Or Tahuya Post Office Bridge, yep.
Okay.
Milepost, uh, fourteen point eight nine.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate where they're coming from. I'm just not sure that it accomplishes anything they're thinking of. We still have to be prepared to, to look at all the options. That's all this does, right? Am I, am I wrong? We're just setting it up so that we can look at the options. Be able to track it, see what, what's happening with it and what we may have to do in the future in order to raise it or anything else if nothing changes. Am I misunderstanding?
Nope, that is, that is the process, and if we can find a cheap enough way, we will come back to the board and tell them we'd like to implement that process, so.
Excuse me. Yeah, I, uh, my, my position hasn't changed on, on this project. I think there's value to it separate from. Uh, whatever the court ruling was last week, um, I think we have an obligation to. You know. Bring the engineering perspective into our projects, and I think that's what this is. I think that's what this accomplishes, and so. Um. I think the judicial ruling has its own. Issues associated with it. Uh, this is us, I think, looking at ways to preserve, uh, our structure there and, and make sure that. Um, you know, there's a lot of unknowns. I mean, uh, you know, with, with the dredging that Commissioner Nolan, you mentioned, I mean, that's, that's not always a given. That's not always. Um. You know, accepted. I mean, you look at our issues out in the Skokomish Valley with, you know. Restraints on, on dredging is, you know. We all know that. So I, I would hate to put all of our eggs in one basket, and I would rather. Move forward with this project to continue to evaluate, but our options are to preserve the structure. I think it's a critical. Emergency access, uh, path, if, if there were a significant event. Out there on the peninsula, and so. I think this is, I think we have an obligation to the community to. Pursue these engineering options as well.
Yeah, I, I would agree, and. Mike, can we have you come to the meeting tomorrow so that you can? Explain this. Like you did just now.
I would love to.
I knew you would. Alright, Commissioners, any more road questions or? Questions for Loretta?
Loretta, I'll be contacting you on a. On an issue, I've had, uh, citizens that are trying to get the internet. Uh, they're working with the PUD. They run into a little bit of a snag where we have the county road. Where the internet would come off of. They have their private road where they would allow it, but they have a DNR piece right in between it. Are you already aware of this?
We are. Mike, Mike and I would love to visit with you about that.
Okay, please, I'd appreciate it, because I'd love to be able to have something that, to know what I can tell. I think I already know, but I need to hear from you, so it's not just me guessing. And then we look and see if there are any options that we're not considering. So I'd appreciate some time on that.
Okay, great.
Commissioners, we also, there was one thing that I neglected, neglected to talk about. Uh, last week, and that was the appointment to tip cap for William Harris. Are we good with putting that on the agenda for tomorrow?
I was not able to participate, but I did watch it, but for some reason it couldn't pick up my, my voice at the moment, so, uh, but he seemed like he was. You know. A good fit for it, but it's. You two will have to make the decision.
Yeah, I support the appointment. How do you interview?
Alright, so, um. We're good with putting him on the, um. Agenda for tomorrow.
Well, so I was gonna say, I mean, it's, we have a quorum. It's not like we have to rush to, I mean. We appoint him on the twenty first and. Call it, call that, you know, I, I don't think we've had to open the. The agenda for tomorrow yet to this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of holding off if, if it's not absolutely needed for the moment, so we don't put more work on our staff that we're. We were just talking about, and we're trying our best to get control of.
I, I do believe it is one of the. Agenda items for tomorrow. Yeah. So Commissioners.
Oh, well then.
Alrighty then, never mind.
Yeah, there it is. Okay, well, in that case.
You know, and I just looked at it too, so.
And I agree with putting it on the agenda.
Great, thank you Commissioners.
Alright. Well. If we have nothing else, let's move on down our, our agenda.
Hey Commissioner, would, uh, would you mind, we, we took like a three minute?
I would not mind.
Thank you.
Alright, Mark. Looks like we're all here.
Alrighty, thank you. Gonna jump off with, uh, Mary talking a little bit. About an update on our Corrections, uh, Officer. Contracting recruitment stuff, and she's gonna jump right into the. Twenty twenty four healthcare contribution, so go for it, Mary.
So I just wanted to come and give a brief synopsis of our current contract with the Corrections Unit, which was, um, just negotiated and finalized in last December. With the members voting to approve it, so the contract's not even a year old. Um, it is available to the public on our county website. And this group's represented by Woodworkers Local Lodge W thirty eight IAM, whereas the other group, um, in the Sheriff's Office is represented by the Federation, was it? Of Police Officers, Fraternal Order of Police Officers. I didn't think about what FOP stood for for a second. Um, so the Corrections Term of Contract is from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four. Um, they have received ten thousand dollars, uh, as a retention bonus paid out in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. Then as part of the contract, um, there was a twenty five hundred dollar retention bonus, uh, baked into the twenty two to twenty four collective bargaining agreement. Uh, the wage increases, so Corrections Deputy Wage Increases, um, it went up by twelve percent at entry. And then nine point seven percent at the top step during the term of the contract. Uh, it'll be a twelve percent for, um, CSOs. Um, employees also receive a step increase every anniversary date, uh, like all of our groups, um, if they're in their first four years of employment. And then after that, they start receiving longevity pay after their completion of fifth year of service, so their longevity, um, kicks in at the fifth year. Um. Excuse me, the sixth year. Uh, their health insurance contributions. Um, employer contribution increased by fifty two dollars per month for each year of the contract, so over the term of the contract, we're looking at an eleven point four five percent. Um, increase. Their shift differential for night shift went from fifty cents per hour to a dollar per hour. We also in, uh, reduced the threshold for receiving temporary promotion pay for work. In a higher classification, so it used to be you had to do two consecutive work weeks to kind of get that, that pay. Um, and now it's, uh, five or more consecutive days, so employees are being paid sooner for out of class. And then, um, are currently our, uh. Ranking within our seven comp counties, we're sitting at number four for Corrections Deputies. So ranked for right where the Commissioners', um, philosophy is, right, right, to be kind of in the middle of our comps, um, based on assessed valuation in our total population. So not, not bad, still sitting in a really good spot. And I just kind of wanted to give an overview of what HR has done. This is not, um, I don't know. All the details of what the Sheriff's Office is doing, so I don't want to speak for them. This is just what our department has been doing. So we've been out in the community quite a bit, career fairs, community events, um, we've attended eight so far this year. We have one this week. Um, our social media activities, so we started utilizing LinkedIn and Instagram this year and then continuing to grow Facebook. So on LinkedIn, we have two hundred ninety eight followers. Uh, well, this is last week. Instagram, one hundred and twenty three, and then Facebook, we're up to around forty three hundred followers, so starting to get some growth there. Um, we have funded some of the Sheriff's Office recruitment efforts. We paid for a hundred and fifty, uh, yard signs, uh, for them. And then we are gonna get a reimbursement through the risk pool, um, and funded their law enforcement career expo that they went to last week. I think I posted some pictures on social media. They looked really good. Um, all their material looked good too. Um, we implemented NeoGov this last year, which is our new hiring platform. Um, the Sheriff's Office has expressed interest in staying with public safety testing, also known as PST. Um, and we want to make sure we're not creating redundancies in the system. So while NeoGov is, you know, good for us for. Getting out there, it's a well-known. If you create a profile on it, you can use it, um, anywhere, um, in the state usually. Um, we're gonna research ways to streamline with public safety testing, since that's a Sheriff's Office, um, preference right now. My big thing is, uh, making sure we can get reporting out of them, and I think that we can work with them on some reporting, which would be great, so I know. Where in the process do we lose an applicant? How many are we getting per opening, et cetera, et cetera? Um, civil service lowered the minimum age requirements for community service officers to eighteen years old this last year, and then they, um, also kind of. Lowered the threshold of marijuana use, so, um, took out that use of marijuana in the last twelve months as an automatic removal. And added that, um, excessive use of marijuana in the last three years as a potential removal factor, so creating a little bit. Um, more grace there as it's, you know, legalized in Washington State now and kind of understanding that. Um, we implemented a flex spending account, an FSA program this last year. The Commissioners approved that, and, um. This is my plug as well for other employees, for everyone to get in there and utilize the program. It's great. Um, we have shifted over some personnel to help, um. Some of the recruitment efforts in the jail and, and the, uh, Sheriff's Office in general, because we have been bogged down with. Board of Equalization. A lot of petitions came in this year, so we shifted some resources around in the department to help offset that a little bit. Um, HR personnel has spent time over at the jail to kind of better understand the environment and kind of what they do a little bit better. Um, and then we sent over an MOU to the union for, um. Double time for voluntary overtime, so if it's. You know, like a scheduled training, so it's gonna be a training and they sign up for that overtime. It could be, you know, a double time instead of time and a half, um. At this time, we're still waiting on the union for, you know, a response and to get back to us. Um, public safety testing also told us that there are opportunities for the Sheriff's Office to send their staff. To testing sites and facilities, um, and kind of recruit on site. I'm not quite sure if the Sheriff's Office is taking advantage of that, but if they're not, I think it would be. Uh, great, and we might even want to send one of our team out too, um, so we can. Hey, pick us, um, and kind of get involved in that. And then we've really kind of been working closely with the Sheriff's Office to identify. Who our points of contact should be over there for recruitment efforts, so we now have a name out of the jail and we have a name out of the patrol side. And then, um, keeping kind of everyone in the loop, so we can forward invites to the right people. Partner at the right events and make sure that we're talking to the right people. Sometimes with a big group over there, that can be a little difficult. Um, and then I just wanted to mention that, you know, staffing the jail, inmate to officer ratios and other operational issues are. At the discretion of the Sheriff's Office Command Staff, so, um, and then, you know, upon requests, they came forward and wanted to outsource inmates. That you as a commission had approved and made that happen really quickly, so. Anything about what those ratios look like or staffing, um, on the floor, those are, those are the command staff. That has nothing to do with our department at all. So, that's kind of a little synopsis of where we're standing currently for that group.
Great. Commissioners, any comments or questions? I truly, I, I appreciate the. Uh, the information. And I think it's important that people understand. What we're doing and. Where we're heading. Commissioners? Don't talk at once.
I, I appreciate your work, Mary, uh. You know, I know that there's. Been some confusion what was even said out there, uh, regarding. Uh, parity with officers, but it turned out it wasn't actual parity, it was eighty four percent, uh, this year, eighty five percent next year, eighty six percent the other. And that actual comparable is actually below us on the rankings for how much is paid, so, uh. We need to make sure that the right information is out there for everybody, so we can make good decisions as we move forward. Without a doubt, we are facing issues and we have to find solutions to issues. And it does not mean that we are not going to continue to look for ways to fix things, but anything that this commission does. Has to actually be effective. Um, there's been a lot of things that are done and it hasn't changed one thing. And. It's not good for any of us to just throw things out there and make. With the expectations that it's doing something when it's not doing something. Our next move has to be effective. We need the bodies, the people in the jail. And. We're gonna focus on that.
I, I concur with that. I, Mary, I appreciate you putting this together. I think when you start to look at the, the actual facts and details associated with, with the contract. Um, it. It helps, you know. Round out the picture, I think that. That we've been given over the past few weeks, and I, I agree with Commissioner Nolan, we, we want to do everything we can to. Help on the recruitment side of things. We want to be able to help. Um, honor the contract that our Corrections Officers negotiated and approved. Um. A little bit less than a year ago, we want to be able to, to work with them to that end. Uh, Mark and I and the sheriff had offered to sit down with, uh, with the union to talk about what we can do on recruitment, to talk about what we can do to him. You know, improve our, our, uh, you know, our access to staffing and things like that, and, and then, you know, allow the sheriff to talk about. You know, what his plans for, for operations were, um, we, we want to leave that to the sheriff and. Um, certainly respect his authority when it comes to managing the jail day to day, um. Uh, unfortunately, the union canceled that meeting with us and wanted more time to prepare, and so I. Respect that, but, uh, you know, we're, we're willing to make every effort that we can to work with them. On, on attracting new corrections officers, help people take advantage of the ten thousand dollar signing bonus that we're offering and. Um, you know, be able to manage that population in there and hold people accountable. Um, we need partners from the Corrections Union to do that.
Right, it's not just a, a Mason County issue. Every county is, is having. Well, I, I would say the majority of the Cameron Counties are having the same issue, including DOC. Is finding sap. So, um. I appreciate you, Mary, reaching out and doing what we can to, to help. We, ultimately, we're, we're a team. And we should all be working together.
And we are still working on the Commission's request around, um, some research for recruiters. We found a couple that I think are potentially worth. Putting together a little bit of like a. Uh, shopping cart compare, um, to at least kind of see how, how they look to each other and what costing might look like, so we're still working on that.
That's really good. Commissioner Trask, your point, I, I, I think your point bears repeating, um. We travel. Just a few minutes down the road to Thurston County, they're, they're down twenty seven corrections officers in their, in their jail. Um. And it looks like, you know, I feel, I feel for Thurston County as a whole. I know that they're gonna be. Looking at budget reductions heading into twenty twenty four, and some of that includes cuts in the Sheriff's Office, and so. Having been through that here ourselves, uh, not too long ago, we know how challenging that is and how difficult it is for. Communities to have to make those kinds of decisions, but you go up north a little bit, Pierce County is. Has about fifty vacancies, uh, in their, in their Corrections, uh, program. I talked to Commissioner Mary Cooney from Spokane. I talked to Commissioner Mary Cooney from Spokane over the weekend. Uh, same deal, they're down about thirty um in their jail as well. And so um your your point that this is a statewide issue is is well taken. And you know what our responsibility and obligation is to is to work with our local corrections officers and um, you know, try to figure out what works to make sense for Mason County. Um, sometimes comparison is the thief of joy. Is a is, you know, it's just difficult to always say, well, it's it's like this someplace else, um it's better someplace else. We have to be focused on what we can do to make Mason County, um, you know, uh, kind of following along those those recommendations from from Mary and HR to making an employer choice and talk about the benefits that we do offer. So I appreciate you highlighting that statewide issue, Commissioner.
And we all know that we have to focus on, regardless of whatever is going on in the world out there. We have to focus on doing whatever we can to get the people into our jails working, because we need backup for the bodies and the people that are there. With that being said, we could have uh people going out recruiting that are actually corrections officers in there. But the truth is, we need that correction officer in there. They shouldn't be out in the street trying to do other things. We need to focus, laser focus on hiring people to go out and get new corrections officers. That's how we'll get our best opportunity to bring in people new. It may cost us a little money, but it's a no-brainer. If we're sending out our corrections office, that sounds good on paper, but who's taking their spot? Is that another time where there's three in the jail instead of four? And I can't justify that. I can justify us uh hiring headhunters to go out there and especially when we don't have them now. It's just something extra and beneficial. So I hope we're not only looking at those options, but we are pushing to find ones that we can enter into contracts with quicker rather than later.
I know Lieutenant Severance and I can't remember the other staff member that went to the law enforcement expo last week. Um they looked great, so love seeing them out there, and I appreciate them making the staffing sacrifice to be there. It was, I'm sure, very fruitful.
Did we get any leads on new employees, Mary?
I haven't had time to talk with Lieutenant Severance yet. I'm not even supposed to be here.
I was waiting for that.
I had to slip it in somewhere.
All right, what do you have next, Forrest?
Um, I have the benefit rates. Um, so this is the increase to the twenty twenty-three non-represented uh medical contributions. Um, so the board has determined that there's a fifty-two dollar medical increase for electeds and non-represented employees. So we'll go from fourteen sixty-six to fifteen eighteen a month. Um, helps us stay in line with what else is going on in the county. Um, and so we are requesting that um these be adopted. Um, listed on the briefing sheet are the groups that um that are enrolled in PEB and what per employee for those individuals enrolled in PEB, what that would look like. And then for those individuals enrolled in PEB as an employee with one or more dependents would look like. And then the um attachment is what the rate sheet is looking like in addition to the resolution.
Looks great to me.
I'm supportive as well.
Yep.
Awesome. I'm leaving. Bye.
So Becky, you're up.
Hi there. So I have one brief uh civil service commission item. Um, Mark Nalt currently is serving on the civil service commission, and he has a term that will be complete the end of December. So when I reached out to him, he said that he would like to be um considered for reappointment.
I think it's a great idea.
We can move that forward to the next regular meeting.
Great, I'm supportive as well.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. All right, uh, defense and indemnification. Nicole.
I am just requesting to um for to go to the action agenda for tomorrow for approval for a request for defense and indemnification um for Kevin Hanson, which you all should have received the case information and documents regarding this.
Is it, does this have to go on the agenda for tomorrow?
Oh.
Um, yes, it's a time-sensitive issue. Um, we've got a specific timeframe between um when we receive these types of litigation documents before we have to have attorneys file notices of appearance on behalf of the county and or any employees that may have been named in the suit. Um, so I mean, that's why I'm requesting that it get moved over to tomorrow's agenda.
Now, it was served upon them the twenty-sixth. What is the difference in date?
Typically, it's a fifteen days. We, it's a little bit different in service by mail, so I can't tell you right off the top of my head. But um, yeah, we received it and I got the documentation and we're just working towards trying to get all the, get all the approvals before the attorney can file on our behalf.
Well, we had, we had a good thing going here, guys.
I thought we did.
But uh I think if I were in Chief Hanson's shoes, I'd want to know that I was, I was indemnified sooner rather than later, so I am um moving that forward tomorrow.
Well, we understand there are times like this, when we have a fifteen-day window, we can't uh wait the weeks. It's just not possible. So I'm sure.
All right, I appreciate it. And I do understand, and typically I do try to wait two weeks out from the briefing. But, you know, with the time sensitivities with these documents, it's kind of hard to wait that long without the approvals.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All righty, Mr. Taylor, you're up. Foothills Park.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Uh, I wanted to go ahead and and close out the first phase of the foothills park for the for the dog park portion, where he executed a non-expense contract for the gatekeeper, which William Long has the primary for, and we issued him two keys uh to make sure the park is closed during the winter schedule, so that the uh park host isn't responsible for that. Since the dog park is predominantly the major feature during the wintertime that people will use. So we executed that contract. He's the primary contact for that. And uh for the date from, if I'm not mistaken, November first through February twenty-eighth, which is the date that we traditionally have the park closed, it'll be open and closed under the responsibility of William uh Long. Any questions?
Was this reviewed by Tim?
I understand it has. Yes, ma'am.
All right, sounds good to me.
Yeah, good with me as well.
Me.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Sean.
John.
All righty, Miss Byerly, VSP.
So, yeah, the first thing that I have for you is the Washington State Conservation Commission contract amendments for the voluntary stewardship program. We contract with uh Mason Conservation District to administer this program. And um we are asking to add the amount of five hundred forty-one thousand five five hundred forty-one thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty cents um to the program per Washington, from Washington State Conservation Commission. Um, and Evan Bowder would have been here, but he was unable to uh make this briefing. So um he's the director at um the Mason Conservation District. So um, are there any questions on this?
Not for me. It sounds good.
Good with it as well.
Great, thank you so much. Um, the next thing that I have is the draft request for supplemental appropriations and amendments. And this is for the second budget amendment or for twenty twenty-three. And um this is still in draft form, um but I wanted to get it in front of you. I'll bring it back again um next week with um all of the budget amendments that are received through today from different departments. Um, so are there any questions or comments with anything that is um on this amendment request so far?
Nope, I didn't see anything. Commissioners?
No, I I didn't have anything as well.
So now we're transferring from the general fund to the sheriff's office, correct, on the uh uh scanner taser lease continuation of drones?
Yes, that would come out of the general fund, and um it would come out of ending fund balance. So, yeah.
Yeah, I'm supportive.
Okay, perfect. Um, I did, I plugged in the hundred thousand for Russell Wood. I don't think they're gonna need that much, but um, that's a just-in-case item. Um, so we can revisit that next week when it's uh more complete. So thank you very much. Um, the last thing that I have is the twenty twenty-four um budget, so I'll share my screen. So we have um, beginning with the general fund for twenty twenty-four, a beginning fu- fund balance of twenty-eight million. And I went ahead and looked at where we were at um at the end of October last year compared to where we started um this year. And I believe that twenty-eight million is a really good estimate for twenty twenty-four in looking at um, in comparing the two, you know, where we were at and where we're at currently. Um, I think it's gonna be really close. Um, so that's what I would recommend, keeping that estimate at at this time. We have right now um estimated revenues in the general fund of forty-three million, three hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars. Estimated salaries and benefits, thirty-three million, seven hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars. Operating expenditures are estimated currently at sixteen million, one hundred twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars. And ending fund balance is estimated at twenty-one million, four hundred two thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars. Um, some of the items that I wanted to go over with you, um, so I talked to uh ther- or not therapeutic, but um Superior Court after um our briefing on the twenty-third, and there was the point zero three seven five FTE that was moved um between Law La- Law Library and Superior Court. And after talking to um to them about that, that was done in error on on their part. So I moved it back to Law Library and out of Superior Court. So that removed um four thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars from salaries and benefits um from Superior Court and into Law Library.
Well, then what was that conversation we had about that position? Because we, after discussing, we did have it. Wasn't that the position we were talking about?
The position itself um was reclassified, and so I still need to go in, I need to figure out how much um was, how much that's going to be. Um, I need to get with HR on that. Um, and make sure that I have that number correct. But the allocation of the employee was, it should not have been moved.
Okay.
Reclass was um, that, you know, should have been done.
So we did have the reclass. We did agree to do the reclass. Uh, it's just that where the the person was positioned is the only thing that's up in the air.
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, Jen, if you're sharing your screen, can't see it.
Oh, sorry.
Looks good, thanks.
Okay, so um the next thing that I had was, um I did talk to Loretta about the radio tech position. Um, and she was under the impression that that was already out of the budget. And so um, I think I went ahead and removed it. Oh, maybe, no, I did not. So um the radio tech position that was under equipment rental and revolving um, that's not been filled for the last several years. So I would recommend that we remove that uh from the FTE count.
And she was comfortable with that?
Yes, she had, she thought that it already had happened and she was fine um not having it. We had the radio tech position when the um the sheriff's office had all of their radios um through ERNR. Now that it's not really necessary.
Yes, I'm supportive.
Great. Yes, am I.
You as well.
Thank you. Um, I added a hundred and fifty thousand, one sixty-nine into um the DCD department for um the building official position. And that's now reflected in the total FTE count that I'll share in a moment. Um, I added in, we had talked about um increasing therapeutic courts revenue um from TST by eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars to um balance their revenue and expense, so that um has been added in. Um, I removed the twelve thousand dollars that we talked about from the clerk's revenue and expense for Blake reimbursements that are now done through AOC. Um, I removed a hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-seven dollars from the sheriff's office budget due to the additional FTE that was added in error. And also um from the landfill, I removed seventy-six thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars from from their budget. Um, for the same reason, the FTE that was added in error. Um, the ti- the sheriff's office had or has a taser lease that was just approved. And so I added into the twenty twenty-four budget twenty-three thousand, five hundred twenty-two dollars um into operating to reflect that amount that's due next year. And um, another thing for the sheriff's office, I did not include this, but I wanted to ask you, Commissioners, um they had um a computer replacement asked for their um vehicle laptops. They had twen- estimated twenty at twenty-five hundred dollars, so um, so they had um fifty thousand dollars in their budget. And after talking to Ben, he's estimating that those laptops are actually gonna be three thousand. And after talking to um Chief Dracoby, he thinks they will only need ten. So um we're asking to in- include those on a four-year rotation and just put those in the maintenance level budget at thirty thousand dollars.
Agree.
Sounds good.
Good with me.
Thank you. Um, I missed the Orca dues increase. Um, the dues should have increased by three thousand, four hundred forty-two dollars and non-departmental. The new amount is fifty-one thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars. Um, so I just wanted to see if I could include that in maintenance level three for when we adopt the budget.
I would think so.
Sounds good.
Thank you. And Commissioner Shu, are you okay with that as well?
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, the point oh nine funding application from the city of Shelton for a hundred and twenty-five thousand um that will be approved hopefully on the twenty-first of November. Um, are you okay with me putting that into the point oh nine uh Fund one oh three budget?
Yes.
I am.
Yes.
Great. Um, so that was all that I had um to cover during the budget briefing. Oh, besides the the vehicles and and the timing, we, I had asked um a couple of weeks ago about if Mark can sign for the motor pool vehicles. And I thought we would need to um update the resolution on what the county administrator can sign for. But um Diane set me straight and said it is under budgeted motor pool business. So she thinks that that is fine um to have Mark sign for um vehicles for, that we've approved for the twenty twenty-four budget to have him sign for those orders. So Commissioners- For, that we've approved for the two zero twenty four budget to have him sign for those orders. So commissioners, if you're okay with that. We'll have that be the practice. As long as they fit within the parameters of the. Motor pool. Rates.
Sounds great to me.
If Diane says so.
But I say hey.
Thank you, and I'll finish going through the special funds at this point in time. So we have a total. Revenue, including their beginning fund balance of a hundred and ten million, nine hundred twelve thousand, four hundred ninety six. Dollars and total expenditures are the same. So the total budget at this point in time, including general fund. Would be a hundred and eighty two million, two hundred thirty six thousand, eight hundred fifty three dollars, both revenue and expense. Currently, we have. The budgeted F T Es for, in total are four hundred sixteen point seven nine. That's a hundred and thirty point one seven in special funds and then. Two hundred eighty six point six two in the general fund. I did include the countywide F T E count in this packet, so you can see. Where those additions and and subtractions happen, mainly additions. So if you want to go over any of that, we can. Or not.
Be easier if you scrolled down than me trying to read this little thing. Just so I could see it for a minute.
Okay, I'll pull it up. Okay, so here is the the general fund F T E count to eighty six point six two. This includes the grant writer position, the building official position. Clerical position for prosecutor's office. The sheriff deputy position. And then for special funds, there is nothing added in our budget discussions. We have. One thirty point one seven, so there's the total for sixteen point seven nine.
Now, how many of these were added during the year also?
So during.
See you have there.
So yeah, we have. In Superior Court, we, in the general fund, we added one point oh seven. That was the accounting tech. And the court commissioner that went from a point nine three two oh one F T E. In the special funds, we added. In roads, the administrative assistant position, we did have a point three intern. Budgeted, so we changed that to a one F T E, so that's an increase of point seven. And then under Community Services Health, we added that epidemiologist position.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Did you want to go over any of the? F T E requests or any other P L R requests or skip that? I don't know how you want to.
Was there anything still up in the air? I thought the commission had. Agreed where they were.
Yeah, I think everything is. Settled on there. I just wanted to make sure that you didn't want it brought up again.
Was there anything the commissioners change their mind on?
Nope, not me.
No, I think I'm, I think I'm done spending for a little bit.
Okay, great. So then the only thing at this point that I would need to change is that. Position for Superior Court, and that's going to be super minimal. And then the. Property taxes. So. Looks like we're just about done.
That's awesome.
Yes, thank you very much. I'll stop my share.
Mark's muted.
Mark?
Already, sorry, yep, I was talking muted. So last item on our agenda today is the proposed ballot proposition, and this is for. Increasing the sales and use tax for nine one one emergency communications operations. And I believe it goes from one percent to two percent, or basically two tenths of one percent sales tax. So the process for this is that the commission would have to request that that go on the ballot. That ballot would be. Tabulated on February thirteenth, two zero twenty four. And the cost of actually running this. Election to see if the public would agree to this increase. Is going to be borne by the general fund. We could ask.
And the amount would be?
You know, that's a great question, one that's difficult to answer, and I probably should let Mr. Dunkel answer those ones. But it's really dependent upon how many other issues are on the ballot, Commissioner, so. Know that if 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 Auditor Dunkle is aware of any other items that are going to be running in February, or this would be a. One item issued that would be a countywide election.
This is the only one I'm aware of right now, but wouldn't surprise me if we had others, so that that cost will get distributed. With all the participating districts.
Do you know what the the cost is off the top of your head, Steve, that is?
Well. It's the last one that I took a hard look at for a fire district was about sixty five hundred bucks.
Oh. Lot cheaper than I thought.
Well, that's a fire district, hold on.
But I want to revisit for the MazeCom. The MazeCom proposal, get a better answer to you guys.
Yeah, that'd be, so it'd be a countywide.
Yeah, so that one may be more, but. We'll take a look at it and get back to you.
Perfect.
And Commissioners, I'd love to still have some discussions of what would be done with that money and and, you know, what that would look like. I want to let you know that I met with some citizens and our representatives, state representatives and the sheriff and. A detective, and one of the things that came out of that was the community saying they have a hard time with communication with MazeCom when they're talking to them, feel like they're. If they have a question or something like that, that that. They're not respected and how they're responded to, and there was a request that came out of that meeting from. With Dan and Travis and stuff, for us to consider looking at and talking to them about having a specific line. Through them with a specific person. Dedicated to just working with the public that's not emergency. Instead of just having nonemergency numbers, stuff like that, that there be some other type of avenues that they can have. I don't know the inner workings of it. I'm just passing on the information that came out of that meeting and the conversation with our state representatives at the time.
So I can talk a little bit about that as being our representative on the board. So this was, this was. Approved unanimously by the MazeCom Board to request putting this on the ballot. Initially. There was some confusion about whose responsibility it was to place it on the ballot, but based on the. Organization setup. It has to fall to the county to place it on there because they're not, it doesn't operate like it. It's a, I guess quasi governmental or council of government type setup, and so. That's why it's in front of us at this point. There is a capital, or not a capital, but I guess a work plan associated with. What would happen with the funds if they were generated for MazeCom. The two tenths. Ability was something that Representative Griffey advocated for in the legislature and was a prime sponsor of, and so. He's been, he's been pressing the organization for a while to to actually follow through on this. Thurston County used it a couple of years ago. And they put that predominantly into upgrading their radio systems. In the county, so I would, I would be actually a little bit more interested in hearing Commissioner Nellin about what some of the concerns were, so I can. Take that back to the board. I know you mentioned that the sheriff was there. He's also on the board. I would hope that he would bring that. Bring that to the board as well. You know, part of the challenge is when people call MazeCom. You know, nonemergency, their dispatchers are often dealing with. Actual, you know, emergent issues in the moment, and they have to multitask through that and, and, you know, they. Think they work really hard to be. You know, courteous in in all their phone interactions, but. Given some of the staffing challenges that we've had at MazeCom. I might have visited for a little while with with them on Friday afternoon, and they were, they were at their minimum staffing level. They had two dispatchers on for the entire county and. Managing. Law enforcement calls and E M S and fire calls and then, you know, citizen, nonemergent calls as well, and so. When we see our call volumes go up significantly year after year. You know, well into the thirty thousand calls plus a year. That's a lot. That's a lot for our, our. Eleven fully trained dispatchers, and so part of the funding would go into staffing. You know, those extra positions and then making some investments in in capital that's. Decades old and and need to be mindful of those things, so. I can certainly get that work plan sent over commissioners for your for your review, but just wanted to pass along that this was something that. That the board wanted to have placed on the ballot and wouldn't have needed to go through us if they were organized in a different way, but. Are really relying on us to allow the voters to weigh in on whether or not they think it should go from one tenth to two tenths.
Okay, after hearing the explanation, you don't have to send it over to me. I, I remember now that you're on there, you're working that plan through, so I. Can guess automatically if there's a good structure that goes with that. As for the other, I want you to understand, I'm passing on the information. I don't know first hand how they were handled, only what we were told. I will ask the sheriff to to explain what he had heard at that meeting and what to do, and perhaps. If he meets with you, you can find a way to do it. It's harder for you and I to meet on it, of course, that's makes it almost possible, but he was there and he was part of that conversation, so maybe he can. Sit with you and together you guys could work your way through that. So with that being said, and the explanation that was given, I will be supportive.
Yeah, oh, I am absolutely supportive. Commissioner Shu, just out of curiosity, how many positions positions do they have open? Are they all filled?
So they are not all filled. We have seventeen funded positions and we're running about eleven to twelve fully trained. Dispatchers and so. Definitely working through some of those challenges. Just interviewed three more individuals last week to to come on, but. Training is a significant roadblock because there's only so many dispatchers who are able to train at any given time. You know, and then it's a difficult job, and so, you know, there's a, there's also a high. Turnover rate, you know, from people who are new to the profession. As they come in, and so we're constantly hiring, we're constantly recruiting. And so it's, it's a challenge for sure, but. We're trying to make some progress there.
Right, it's such a critical job. It's so important. I mean, our first responders couldn't do their job well. If we didn't have them.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a, it's a really good group. Most of them are are. Season dispatchers, they've been with the organization. I think the majority of them have been there at least five years, if not more than ten, so. We have a good group. It's, it's, you know, just we need to get some additional, additional help in there, get those positions filled and. Be able to. Always make sure that there's adequate staffing.
Right. What's the minimum age for that?
Eighteen. So there's a testing process that they have to go through. There's some minimum qualifications, and then they have to go through a similar. Processes if you were going to go work at at the sheriff's office or police department. We have to do a background and. Psych and polygraph and all that kind of stuff, you know, meet those requirements, but. Starting pay is is good. You know, we've worked on getting those up over the past several contracts and. You know, but it's, it's definitely a job that is more calling than than job. I think you have to be. You know, comfortable with some of the. Things that you're gonna have to deal with and. Of course, you know. Nights, holidays, weekends, you're, you're, you're fully rooted in that public safety first responder world, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. All right, well. What's that?
Sorry.
Oh, I just said that I support it.
Thank you. Looks like I got support from all three commissioners, so this will come before you on the twenty first. For official action and then definitely let the auditor's office know that it's coming so that they can properly plan. For running that February election.
Sounds good.
Just then, Mark, just you'll keep us posted on the cost associated with this, and I don't know that. I don't know that there's a cost recovery ability. You know, if it's exorbitant, I don't know how, you know, we'll make it work either way, but. One thing that we want to keep an eye on is is the cost to do this.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'm always interested in the cost, and that's why I was asking about earlier, but at the same time, I. Throw it in history, we've done it before for Parks District. Before I got here for a cemetery district, there's been other. Times where that that tool is used because sometimes the easiest and best way to do it is just for us to do it. Going through another process to where they end up paying for it themselves can sometimes be very big and laborious, so.
The reason they're going for it is because they need additional funds, and so for us to then turn around and say. We're in charge for it, might defeat that purpose, but, but yeah, I will follow up with Auditor Dunkle and and. Get an estimate on, what I'd like to do is is just kind of get an estimate on what it would cost if that was the only item on the ballot. To kind of give you the worst case scenario, and then if in fact there's other. Individuals that want to run something on that same February thirteenth, we would, we would pay that proportional share.
I believe the. To get you guys that information.
Yeah, I'd rather wait till there's more on the ballot than just us. I'd rather share the costs.
Yeah, and it's really nothing, I mean, it's a cost of running elections that comes into Auditor Dunkle's general fund budget. So it's not like we get a specific bill for it. It's it's just covered out of the general fund expenses of running elections, so.
Uh, is that accurate?
I believe so.
So I think they still have to bill us.
It's kind of, so he's funded out of the general fund, so it's not a, so the expense is incurred, and we don't, we just don't get reimbursed for it if that makes sense. Right, so normally. Auditor Dunkle would conduct an election. Do his magic in terms of how does, how does the cost of this election get spread out, and if there are. Costs that are related to county requests, then then those are, those are not billed out, those are just. Absorbed by our general fund budget costs. So I will verify that, Commissioner Nellin.
As I said, you guys, I'll get you all that.
Oh, great, thank you.
All right. Do we have anything for Mark? For Mark, do you have anything more for us?
I don't. I feel like I, we had a marathon meeting this morning, so glad that we all made it.
All right, Commissioners, anything more for Mark?
For me.
And for me either.
Well, we have nothing more. How about a motion?
We adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, we are adjourned. We'll see everybody back here at nine A M tomorrow.
Thanks, everybody.
Sounds good, thank you.